To order. That's when you get your call.
Sure. Uh, let's see, I have to remember that I have new names on my list. Uh, let's go with Anita Fulish.
Here.
Scott Long.
Here.
James Hestrom.
Here.
Jennifer Elliott.
Here.
Wally Wolf is absent, Claire Anderson.
Here.
And Diane Anders is absent.
All right, next on our agenda is to approve the minutes from the September 12th, 2013 meeting. Does anybody see any additions or corrections to these minutes?
Scott noticed on the, um, third page, I guess, Dustin said it would be put in front of the county commission on September 26th. Is that 2014?
Uh, no, it should've been 2013.
2013? Oh, that's right, in front of the county commission, okay.
Yeah, 'cause everything we do, if we make any action.
It's just a week or two later.
Goes to 14 days after we do, which means it goes to the county commission two Thursdays afterwards, so.
Any other changes?
Do we need to put the figure in there?
All right, if there are no other changes or corrections, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
A move we approve the minutes.
Becky.
All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries, we've approved the minutes. Uh, and next on our agenda is review, the amendments to Ag 40 and Ag 80 regulations. Dustin, can you update us and then I'll get Bill, Scott, and Claire in?
Okay. Um, let's see, back in August, um, I had put forward some, some regulation for, um, allowing people to essentially create a home site or sell off a home site, not create one, but, um, sell off a home site without having to worry about the minimum acreage requirement for the home site. Uh, of its, I guess what you would call a parent zone. For instance, if you look behind the, the regulation there, I've got some maps there for you guys, um, to kind of give some examples. The 1300 and fair, um, example is there's a house down by the pond, and then if, on the current regulation, on the, on the page after that, you can see where it requires, they require 40 acres for that. Um, and now, under normal zoning, um, let's say the house wasn't there and they wanted to build a house there, they'd need 40 acres. Um, under what I'm proposing, because there's a house there existing, on the next pa- on the next page, you'll see the little bitty red square around the house, that's five acres. That's, that square is 407 feet by 407 feet. So what I'm proposing is that we make it easier for people to sell off a home site on ground that they own. Now, like, this falls under the same thing, you can only do it once per lot, um, and then if you split the land after, it has to be, you know, the minimum acre. So if it's Ag 80, in my office, anything less than 80 acres or 40 acres doesn't, um, has to have a split. Anything more than that, if it's in the Ag 40, they, you don't even have to touch my office if you're selling more than 40 acres, uh, or 80 acres respectively. Now, I know that's a lot to soak in. Um, the, uh, so what I'm proposing is to allow people to, and the same for Ag 40 or Ag 80, doesn't matter, you'd need five acres minimum, um, to create a, a piece of land around the home site, an existing home site. To define existing, I got with Randy Barton, and we sat down and we decided what both of us would consider existing. Um, and so I went ahead and added that definition as number one, under the, the homestead stuff. Um, so that it's the ability to prove that a site once or currently does contain a residential dwelling by means of an existing dwelling and/or existing sanitary sewer system. Um, and then flat in there putting that the validity of existing sanitary system shall be determined by the, by the county sanitarian. This way, somebody can't come in and go, "Well, you know, 75 years ago, my grandfather used to live in that house back there, and it's a grove of trees. There has to have been a septic there," you know. It, yeah, may be a perfect home site, it may look fantastic for one, but this is about making land that's there and viable and used for a home site. If they can prove to us, if there's a remnants of an old building there, an old rundown house, that counts. It's obviously was used as a home site. Um, and they can, you know, they can then tear it down and build a new house if they want to, they just have to prove that it was a home site. So what this does is it prevents people from going, "I want this piece of ground out in the middle of my field, or out in the middle of this pasture, and I'm gonna make a home there." There has to have been a home there. Uh, now, the, um, I had, uh, the county commission had some questions on the easements. Um, who's responsible for the easements? Why are we recording easements? Um, and the answer to that is, is if we put the easements on the surveys, and they have to be put, given to us on the survey, then the register of deeds office, 50 years from now, when somebody buys one of these home sites that we created, they know where their drive is, where their utilities come from, and it's all on the survey, who takes care of it. Most people will put it on the current homeowner to maintain, or the, the person who buys the, the land. Um, but that way, it's there, it's recorded, and everybody knows it. Um, and their big question was, when I, when I went in front of them, was why, why do we do that? And the answer is, it's not for, you know, um, the, the maps, the first maps you see there is, uh, is the Foltz's, and they're looking at some house to their son. But the son doesn't want all the other farm ground, and the dad doesn't want to give him all the other farm ground. Um, so for, and like I was telling them, you know, it's great and dandy that, you know, if you want to use this driveway, the big long driveway there, but let's say 30 years from now, son decides he wants to build a new house somewhere else, sells the one he's in, now who's responsible? So if it's on the survey that's recorded, that gets put in. Um, and that way, we can maintain record of it. So basically, what I've done with this in redoing it is I've narrowed it down, I've put a minimum acreage requirement on it, so that there's no question, it's not about its parent zoning, or it's, both of them read the exact same way, in that you need that 470 by 470 and an access easement of 25 feet, at le- of 25 feet of width at least. That was.
It has to be at least four, or it has to be at least four.
At least 470 by 470.
It can be larger.
It can be larger, yeah, you, you can do larger. Um, but it has to be at least that with a, with a recorded access easement. Um, and I've found in doing a lot of, in a lot of the research that I've found, that five acres tends to be about accurate for what the old home sites were. You're running anywhere between five, between three and seven, so I went with five. Um, and I had some numbers here, um, my, after we did the three acres, I started receiving questions and phone calls, and we have so far processed seven splits for the three acres outside, outside the city limits. Um, and I have four people who are currently waiting to see what happens with these before they determine if they're going to do a subdivision, or if they can do what they're looking at under this. Um, yes, the Foltz's are one of them, I asked if I could use their land to, as a description. Um, and, uh, I've had 16 phone calls on questions about what they can do for the homestead stuff, because people saw it, and then they saw that it didn't pass. Um, and then I've had about.
This was the only piece that didn't pass?
That's the only piece that didn't pass. Um, and then I've had 28, I think if I'm counting correctly, 28 phone calls with questions on the three acres, five acres piece of, so. So people are looking to utilize it, and, um, it's sellers. I've had three people asking, "Where can I go buy this?" Every single other person has been, "How can I sell this?"
Wow.
Um, which I didn't expect at all, I really did not expect that. And so I asked the sales, the person who handles the sales in the, in the, um, appraiser's office, 'cause every, every home or land sale goes through the appraiser's office to be, to be certified, I asked them if they would mind just kind of taking a, you know, a non-scientific blanket survey of, you know, would you have bought more or less if you could? Um, and most of the people buying really didn't say either way. The people selling were the ones who said, "I wish I could've sold less," or, you know, "Wish we would've sold a little more," depending on who was buying and where. Of course, most of those were in town, because the land sales for houses and stuff don't go that, that often out in county comparatively, but, so what I, I guess what I'm, what I'm getting at is, is this tends to, and has become more of a, a thing for sellers, and that's because farm ground's going insane right now. So, um, but I have, I, I've had a lot of positive comments on the, on what I've proposed here internally. Um, you know, to, like I said, Doug Thompson read over this, and he thought that it was very good as a legal standpoint to defend it. Randy Barton liked the idea of doing the existing home site. Martin Tannahill was very happy with the access easements and, you know, making sure we knew where the road was, because the pieces will, you know, if it's an existing home site, if they have to build, you know, it's one that hasn't been used in 15, 20 years, and they don't have an address there for some reason, we'll address it off where the easement is, but most of these already have an address established. So it's nothing we have to worry about that way.
What, I know you talked a little bit about some of the questions the county commission asked you, because we'd already approved this once, and I know you've made changes to it, but what was their concern to send it back to us? Was it the easements, or was it?
It was, it was twofold. Um, one, they wanted, they, the easements was the biggest question they had for me to rework that, even though I only added the minimum access easement width to the easement portion of this.
Okay.
Every, the, the easement stuff still reads the same.
Okay.
Um, and the other one was, I asked them to send it back, because I thought, um, after, after our meeting, I had some questions that I was rolling through in my head, and, and it was the minimum acreage for me. So I asked them if they would kick it back, so that I could rework it and.
Okay.
Bug you guys with it some more, you know, because I have nothing better to do. So, but I thought putting the minimum acreage on there would really narrow it down and allow us, and me, um, more flexibility in what I can do, but also restrict it.
Yeah.
Because it makes a lot more sense to be able to go, "Okay, this home site, it's obvious, there you go, five acres, 10 acres, whatever," versus, "Okay, I understand that this, this home site's a quarter mile back in your ground, but you gotta do a 1360 by however long that is, all the way back there." So this, to me, makes more sense, the way, the way I, I redid it, um, because originally, when I did it, that's how it was, it was, "Yeah, you can create a home site, but you gotta still have the zoning of whatever it's under." So you still have to do 40 acres, or 10, or, and it didn't make a whole lot of sense. So I redid it this way, and that was their, that was, the easements was a big concern. But that was their secondary one, was, "Well, how big can I go, how little can I go?" And I said, "I don't know." So I, I redid it this way.
Okay, so can I ask a question?
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe I wrote this incorrectly, but when I read the difference between the Ag 40 and the Ag 80, your lot dimensions are not the same, so you're saying that you want five acres, period?
Period, for this, for the existing home sites.
But right here, where it says lot dimensions, and you have a minimum depth of 660 and a minimum width of 660.
Yep.
Unless you're in a school zone, but then the other one is what, 1320?
Yes.
So how many, to me, that's twice as much in Ag 80 as it is in Ag 40.
It is.
Am I not understanding that correctly?
In the, in the regular regulations, it is.
Currently.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Currently, only the red is what we're changing.
Oh, okay.
We're just changing the homestead act where we're trying to.
All right, that makes sense.
This, this, this portion here is, and I guess I apologize, I should've gone over that, this is in addition to what we already have.
Okay.
Um, the, the black text is what's existing.
Is what you have right now.
The red text is the stuff we're adding, and that is saying, "Okay, if you want to split off land, here's what you can, but if there's an existing home site, you could do this if you wanted to go through the extra steps of the really intensive survey, filing an affidavit that says this is who's responsible for everything, and then signing a paper that says you can't split it further, period, without a plat." So it's really restrictive, once they do this, so it makes, it kind of, you know, really buckles down on people to, to do it correctly, if they do it correctly, but it also gives me the option of letting people do it correctly, so we can kind of make sure that this, you know, three and a half acres doesn't happen randomly out in the middle of nowhere.
Okay, so you're saying, like, with the example of the Foltz's ground here, if they did this five acres here just around the house, they couldn't come back later and do another 40 acres or something on this property?
Correct. If, if they split it larger than 80, because they're in Ag 80, if they, if they did the five and they had 200 left, and they split it 100 and 100, I can't touch that period, because it's larger than the zoning. But if they ever decide to go 79 and anything, that's when I step in, because it's smaller than those 80 acres. And the same goes for Ag 40. If somebody sells off a 10-acre piece, and they have 100 acres, they sell off 10, now they've still got 90, they could still do a 45 and a 45, but anything past there, they'd have to do the ag lot split agreements on those, because they're still larger than the zoning, that I just muddy the water.
Because they'd have more than 40 acres?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, then on that, the, when you were talking about grandpa or whatever lived there 75 years ago, out there, and there was a place, okay, if grandpa lived there, and there are buildings, but grandpa didn't have a septic system?
Then, then, then there has, as it's worded, um, existing, the ability to prove that the site once or currently does contain a residential dwelling by means of existing dwelling and/or existing septic.
Okay.
So if there's, if he never had a septic, and there's no residential dwelling, 'cause, yeah, there could be garages there, but there has to be something that looks like a house. And back then, they didn't use more buildings for houses, so that's really easy to, to look at and know that was a house.
Okay.
So if there's none of that there, it doesn't qualify.
Okay, then I only had one other question.
Yeah.
What about floodplain areas? What if grandpa's house is in a floodplain?
That's a different ballpark, the, they're still restricted to the floodplain regulations.
Okay.
Um, this just indemnifies them to what land they can split. Then the other side of that, still my job, but the other side of that is, is the floodplain side, and that's all handled under the floodplain regulations.
Okay.
So, um, something we ran into when we did the three-mile rule with the floodplain stuff, because basically, the entire south, three miles, you know, of Solomon and Abilene and Chapman, half that's taken up with floodplain, um, but that still falls under a different subset for them, so, yes, they could technically do it in the floodplain, that's fine, they just have to build a floodplain code if they decide to do it. So.
Okay, and this five acres, this isn't just in the middle of the section, but this would be like a Todd Coman house, too?
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
It could qualify for that, any existing home site.
Yeah, okay.
Um, and, and the, and I talked, I talked to Doug Thompson about that, and the majority that we decided was, basically, it's a loophole, um, if we decide to go, that's off the road, because how do we define that? You know, it has to have, then we have to go, you have to be, have a home site with X amount of frontage away from the road. It's better just to say, "An existing home site, period," because that qualifies, if it's on the road and they want to go through all this for it still being on the road, that's on them, because they still have to say who's responsible for the easement, even if it's on the road, you know, they still have to go through that survey to show where the utilities are, all that stuff.
But this allows them to sell an existing home site without having to.
Without having to break out 40 acres. Or, and, you know, in, in Ag 40, without, without splitting out 10, in the middle of nowhere, or right on the road, it, it allows them to do five. But then, on the flip side of that, it doesn't allow them to create brand-new homes using five acres, they have to still, if it's brand-new homes, um, or splits in general, this is just for existing home sites. If they come to me and say, "I want to sell this off to my brother, and there's no home on it, and they don't intend to build on it," technically, they still have to come in and do the ag lot split. Most people don't, because they're not worried about building, but technically, for it to be legal, they do. So this is just existing home sites. And I think that's where we kind of got lost with it in the last, in the, when we ran through it last time, there was so much that I was working on a lot of it at the same time, it kind of got lost in it, so.
Clarify access easement for me, please. Is that a driveway on the road?
Driveway, um, if it's, if they're on the highway, it would be their driveway.
Or a dirt road.
Um, or a dirt road, if it's, the access easement is a described piece of ground, for instance, the, on this one here with the big, the big long driveway to the back.
Yes, how they're gonna get back here.
The access easement is a description, um, and that's the thing, is you have to get a survey out there to go, "A 25-foot wide strip of land from point A to point B."
So the house has to be 25 foot off the road?
No, the, the 25, uh.
It's 20, it's.
The access has to be 25 feet wide.
How do they get from here to here, and 25 foot wide would be that easement, that, how do they get access to this? Well, it's an easement, it's gotta be 25 foot wide, that entire distance. It can be around a little bit, but they gotta have 25 foot width easement from, from the public road to there to get access to it, is.
And.
Now, is that just a legal agreement, or is that, does that mean they have to own the ground?
They don't, they don't have to.
It's a legal agreement.
They can, they can be on the survey as.
But that's deed, that's with the deed then, the easement is part of the deed.
So they could, they, if they wanted to.
I had one of those, but I didn't realize it when I lived in Chapman.
Yeah.
We had a, we crossed the 80 to get to our house back over the hill, but I didn't realize it was a 25-foot easement, or we would widen that driveway.
Well, right now, there aren't any minimums. There's, there aren't any minimums at the moment.
Okay.
This is, this is brand-new. Um, the, uh, and that's what it is, is it'll be recorded with the survey, they could, if they wanted to, they could sell a 25-foot strip all the way down if they wanted to, um, but it will be recorded with the deed as, as a survey that says, "This is where your easement's located, here's the width, here's who's responsible," and that'll all be on the survey, so it's visible in there, and that's why the surveys are.
So if somebody else buys land around them, you know, and you're talking, you know, one or two or three owners down the road, we have no landlocked properties, you will always have access to your property.
Yeah, and, and then, I talked, I talked to a couple of, a couple of local engineering and survey companies, and that kind of thing starts to get expensive. So it's, they're gonna really have to want this in order to do it. Um, if it's along the road, it's a little easier, 'cause you can say, "The access easement is a long Highway 15 in this, you know, a strip this wide, then that'll suffice." But for this, they're going to have to have a surveyor come out there and go, "Okay, here's your legal description for this 1,800-foot-long easement." It's, it'll be expensive, but I think that's where the trade-off is, we're gonna get people doing this who really want to do it, have to do it legally, versus people just doing it willy-nilly, because they can now create a five-acre piece of ground in the middle of nowhere. In order for it to be legal, if they go through this process, you're, there's a lot of footwork involved, so.
I really like the idea of making the easement, uh, part of, part of the fact they have to do it.
Yeah.
And I'm not even sure if 25's enough, um, you know, 130 would be.
Um, the, when I was talking, when I was talking to Martin, he said that he figured 25 minimum would be about good for an access easement, but utilities and stuff, you know, they, they could require a little more, so that's why I put a minimum access of 25 feet. That way, the utilities, they may have to have a different, you know, a different set of acts, of easement for utilities. So, but a lot of these already have utilities established, so it's, you know, they're just gonna have to mark where those utilities are from, so they know, you know, where they can do repairs and that kind of thing. And if you look, um, on the back, and actually, it kind of, there's a little quick one, on the Ag 40 stuff behind it, um, I printed these off, um, because this, and actually, the packets I have sitting over there on the table don't have these maps in them, because this gentleman came in at about 2:00 this afternoon. So I asked him if I could use, this is a good example for the Ag 40 stuff, um, because he's got an old home site, and under the current regulations, he'd have to do this. Now, he is, it's actually kind of a perfect storm, he's three miles away from Chapman, this is just north of Chapman, so he'd only have to legally do three acres, which is 360 by 360, but because his home site's down here, he'd have to do 360 all the way down there. Under this, yes, he'd still have to do five, but he doesn't have to worry about where he lines it up along the road, he can do five for the old home site, he maintains his farm ground, and then he can do the access easement out to the road, it'll be fine. So this is kind of an ideal place for that, um, to kind of show that as well. This place, if you know the area at all, it's basically rock, so he has to sell a little bit of the farm ground in order for them to use septic, but, um, but when he came in, and he came in with the, the guy who's gonna be, um, building, 'cause he, Caleb Strauss is the guy that owns this, and he owns the whole, the whole piece there, but he's looking at building a house in that little bit, um, and there's his, uh, there's already a house there that is in really bad shape and needs to be torn down, and so that's what they're gonna do. So, um, this was just a good, quick example, so that I could kind of show what, what the 40, you know, even in the Ag 40 stuff, they still need five acres, no matter where they are.
I think this has a good use, it's a good tool for you, to be given a little more flexibility than to try to, you know, make them have so much frontage and, you know.
It, it maintains a little bit of, um, it gives me just a little bit more, well, yeah, a little bit more flexibility, but it also, um, gives me, I almost want to say a bargaining tool, because it makes it a lot more viable for people to come in and do this stuff legally, if they know that they can do it easier, then they don't have to sell off as much land. Um, then actually, the plat that we were, that we were gonna have tonight, they withdrew to wait to see if, 'cause they were gonna sell off 10 acres, um, as part of the plat, and so now they're gonna wait to see if they can just do five, or if they have to resubmit it for the 10, so, because they'd rather do five instead of 10. So, um, so we'll see what they do with that, but, you know, they wanted to wait and see what we were gonna do here before they worried about it, so.
It's a good administrative tool for you to have in your toolbox.
And I think, I think that I've reworked it enough that I can't really work it, you know, it's almost at this point beating a dead horse for, if I could do anything else with it, I think this is about as good as I can get it through this.
I think this is getting tight, when I read what was in black, I was like, "What the heck, man?"
Yeah, yeah, and that's, and that's the thing, is what's, what's really funny, is I wrote the stuff in red, and, um, other people wrote the stuff in black.
No, you didn't.
So.
My only thought is just while, while we're doing it, maybe just, maybe just put the minimum at 30, it's just a thought, I mean, that doesn't have to be, I'll, I'll support it either way, but, um, typically.
No, for the access easement?
Yeah, yeah, machinery gets bigger, campers get bigger, boats get bigger, um, and, uh, just seems to me that, you know, another five feet might be.
Yeah.
I've been on a place where the access was 20, and, uh, we can't hardly pass two vehicles on that, and by the time they, you know, put a driveway in and a little bit of ditches, it was, it was really pretty tight, um, and, you know, fences on both sides, and they got really pretty tight. And I think, I think two and a half more feet on each side isn't much, five feet on each side would have, 20 would be better. Anyway, just a thought.
You said you looked on one where you had to cross in Haiti, would you have rather had, you know, what, what do you think, would 30 be?
If I would've had to have power poles on it, it wouldn't, really needed to be wider, but ours, our property actually joined the, it actually took, it actually went to the road, but it went over a hill onto minimum maintenance, and they made the driveway at the top of the hill for drainage, instead of going down over the hill and having drainage problems all the time, that's, that was the purpose of the easement. But, yeah, you get, you get a motor home and a car coming towards each other, and then a power line and a fence, and.
So you're running out of room.
So you think. Like the examples you have here, they're gonna have, if there's power, I don't know how they get their power out, out to this house, but if there was power lines going down the driveway, you'd even need more room.
So you guys think to change it to 30 for minimum then? Um, in some counties, in the research I've done, I've seen 50, 50-foot wide minimum, as an access easement width, and, but, but what they did was they say access and utility easement. easement of fifty. So...
If you require the thirty, and then the utilities want to require more, that's still up to the utilities to be able to do so, correct?
Right. Because they still have to put on the survey where the utility easements are, so they have to get in touch with the utility companies and figure out where their easements are, and figure out who's responsible at that point. Like I said, there's a lot of legwork for it.
Utilities is a separate easement?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Well, then you don't have to worry about that on your driveway.
Sometimes it's not. Sometimes people like to lump it in as an access and utility easement in one big swath. I left it separate for that reason.
I think, I mean, I think it's six and one and a half dozen of the other, really. I mean, it could be twenty-five or thirty, but you said minimum, so the minimum has to be twenty-five, and if you come to find out, you know, you don't already have power and water and whatever else you need out at the site, you may have to negotiate with that landowner to say, I need an easement of fifty, because I've got to run power back here or whatever, so, I mean, I'm okay with either minimum, because it's a minimum. They can go wider if they need it. So, you know, fifty years ago, there were a lot more houses in the country, I mean, old homesteads than there are now, and it could be any of those, right? Even though there's a house burned down.
So long as they can prove that they either have existing septic, it doesn't have to work.
Yeah.
And they can go out there and go, tink, tink, there's the old septic tank. You can tell if somebody's buried it recently. But, you know, they have to prove that it was an existing home site by means of an old dilapidated house or an existing septic. But yes, those would qualify if they can prove those.
Okay, I have a question. What if that existing house is on a minimum maintenance road? Who's responsible for rocking the minimum maintenance road?
At that point, it's, it's up to the, first off, that would probably be in the survey, as, as to who's responsible for the road, because the landowner selling it normally would be, or the person building the house, but if they're doing it in the middle, they need to contact the township and do an agreement with them. So, because we try to, we really try to avoid that as much as possible along the minimum maintenance, and that's, that's a thing that I kind of thought about with running into with the, because with those old home sites, a lot of times you are going to run into them being along a minimum maintenance road or next, you know. So what I was, what I was thinking was, that I'd also include in this, a, in part of the, because I haven't created the actual homestead form yet, because I wanted to, you know, know what we were doing with it before I created the form. As part of that, I actually thought about including in there, that they have to provide me with information from the township, saying that they've spoken to them and they know who's going to rock it and that kind of thing, as part of that, so that they know. Because some of these people, you know, they're not going to worry about it, because the road's already rocked, but on a minimum maintenance road, that becomes very important, and I thought about adding that into the form that, you know...
Thanks. Like you said, a lot of these houses that are set for, I'll bet the one down from my place, set there fifty years, the road was rocked at one point, because you can still see traces, but it's mud when it's wet.
Yep.
It's been, but he could sell that, he could sell five or ten acres off there, and somebody could build, correct?
Theoretically, right now.
And I know the township can't afford to rock it, because when we flood, I'm stuck at home, because our bridge is too low, and I've tried to get that rocked, and I have to pay for half of it if I want it rocked.
And normally, that's kind of the deal that the townships make with people, is you pay half, we'll pay, you know, we'll pay half and maintain from there.
I'll just sit at home.
So... But, and that's, and that's normally what they'll make as well, for, for people who are building houses too, so.
And some townships have it where you have to rock it twice before they walk.
Yep.
Or for twelve months.
Yeah.
You pay, you pay for the rock, you pay for the upkeep for the first year, or you pay for the rock and upkeep for the first two, but that's what I mean, is I want them to be able to bring me something that says they've talked to the township and they have this.
That's a good idea, because you could break a township really fast.
Well, I assume the township has right of refusal, too. They could just say, you know, sorry.
Sorry you built on a minimum maintenance road. They do have that privilege, so.
If it's posted minimum maintenance, their liability is pretty slim, I would think.
Yeah.
Or gravel ends here. It's amazing how many people miss that sign, though.
It's muddy.
Okay, well, are there any other, any more discussion about this regulation, or any more proposed changes?
Please, if you have any questions, throw them at me, because, you know, like I said, I did this over there in that office over the course of the last month and a half, rewriting it four or five times, so right now it's kind of a blur up here.
I think it's great.
So...
I got, I have one.
Yeah.
You're going to get a lot of questions, probably.
No, 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 you're fine.
How do you determine what Ag forty and what Ag eighty is?
Oh, Ag forty is anything within half mile of paved road. Ag eighty is anything past there.
Okay.
Now, for instance, if a piece of ground is best, I should put this up here, but I didn't connect up the, didn't connect the drapery, but let's, we'll do it all school. Actually, I am. Okay, let's say, for instance, that, the best example I have, let's say, this is Highway fifteen. You've got, let's say, you're dealing with a quarter here, so you've got, you've got the highway here, and then you're dealing with a quarter here. This quarter, well, let's say it's more than a quarter. Let's say, this piece of property goes all the way over here and touches this dirt road, okay? That looks useful. So let's say you've got a guy who's got a parcel here, and then this person owns everything back, so three-quarters of a mile back. This piece is still technically considered Ag forty, because part of it is within a half mile of a paved road. If he splits it here for some reason, this is now Ag eighty. If he split it here, this is Ag eighty now, but if he just does a little piece like that, it retains its original zoning. So if they split it and the entirety of the split is past that half mile, then that becomes the new zoning. If it's not, it maintains its original. Which, again, that's a really interesting way to basically to say, everything within half mile is Ag eighty, everything past there is, see, everything past half mile is Ag eighty, everything within is...
So am I understanding the purpose is to stop basically subdivisions out in the middle of nowhere?
Bingo.
Okay.
Dead on. Inside that half mile of paved road, if you had a hundred and sixty acres, theoretically, you could split it into four forties without touching my office, and each one of those could split once into a ten-acre, currently a ten-acre piece and a thirty-acre piece. Ag forty allows for every forty acres to have two houses, for every forty acres. That's the idea. And then Ag eighty is every eighty acres, at most, two houses, without coming in to do a plat. That happens very rarely, where, you know, you've got somebody who does that. But any more than that, they have to come in and plat it. So theoretically, it could...
Okay, what is plat?
Do what?
What is plating it?
Subdividing. It's a subdivision.
Okay.
The plat is actually what they submit.
Pretty expensive.
So... The plat itself is what is, the piece, the paperwork that's submitted to create a subdivision. It's what says, this legal description has lot one, block one of this addition, lot two, block one of this addition. And so if they want to split it farther than that, they have to come in and, and plat it. They have to come in before you guys and ask for permission, prove they have the utilities to support that many houses, do all that jazz, and then that goes in front of county commission, and actually, the same thing to them. So, so that everybody's aware that there's more than that two minimum for its zoning out there.
Any other questions or discussion about this? Somebody want to make a motion, and when you make the motion, please state if you'd like the minimum to be twenty-five or thirty?
So moved, and, and I would, I would vote for, move that the minimum be thirty, and both the Ag forty and the Ag eighty, the way Dustin hasn't written, would be in favor of that.
Is there a second?
Second.
I move in second, that we approve the amendments to Ag forty and Ag regulation, Ag eighty regulations, with the addition of thirty-foot minimum on the access easement. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Closed?
Motion passes. All right, new and old business. What do you have for us, Dustin?
They're off till next year.
Great.
That's all I got.
We're planning for a January meeting, as soon?
No, the next yearly meeting would be equal.
So in case somebody, you'll let us know when somebody comes in and applies?
Yep, I'll let you know when someone comes in and applies, and normally, December, January are pretty dead. There may be a plat from a group, from a couple of guys that brother bought, your brother used the, the three-acre rule, but he bought seven. And then wants to sell half of that to his brother, but he knows he has to plat it there in the process of that. I just don't know if it'll be for January or February. They know they have to come in and do that. It's on Hawk Road, it's just south of Brown's Park, so it's on a paved road. The landowner was actually trying to get the survey to show it, so they already knew. They're just going through the actual process for it, so... So the zoning fits and everything for it to be three acres, they just have to do the plat. So that'll be coming eventually, but it didn't make it today, which means nothing until January, so...
Is that, well, that'd be the, the paperwork you gave me said the third Tuesday of every month. This is the second.
I must have given you a copy of the old bylaws, I'm sorry.
So it is the second?
It is the second, yes. Yep.
Okay, cool. Good.
Yes, and from what I've read so far, when I went before you, you guys, you buy the book. I mean, I was, I'm impressed. When did you come before us? For Angel Fire ammunition, year and, almost year and a half ago.
Yep.
That's right.
As a conditional use permit?
Yes.
As a approval, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
You want to know something interesting? Now you wouldn't have to do that. You would have had to, now you wouldn't have to do that, because the, the law that the state passed, the handgun law, if you had built it and dedicated a business, a building to it, we would have had to do a commercial initial use permit, but if, but nothing to do at all with firearms, it'd just be for the commercial side of it, but now that it's out of your home, you wouldn't even have to worry about it, because of that law.
So, so minor question.
Yeah.
But, so a conditional use permit, do those have to be reapplied for re-whatever every year or five years?
If, only if that's a condition.
Only if that was a condition. It wasn't in his, I don't think it was.
Nope.
One time.
Yep.
And I would, now, if you used to do this, I can operate on Ag zoned ground.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's okay.
Because, because it's, like I said, if you built a dedicated building for the commercial portion, you know, like you, you decided to do it in a building, if you were having people come to that building just to buy, then we'd have to do the commercial portion, but the firearms is completely out of it, so, because of the law that passed. So, yeah, but if you were to come in my office, I'd like to do this, have at it, bye.
Well, my insurance agent out of Kansas City is where I had to go for homeowner's insurance, because I don't even like it on my property. He told me he's insuring people that are doing it in their basement.
Oh, jeez.
Well, it's that safe. People that understand the business, understand that...
But you had to go all the way to Kansas City to get insurance?
Yes.
Yep.
For somebody that would risk the underwriting, and it's Safeco Insurance. I've tried to get the guys in town to cover it under Safeco, and they're, they're, they just run away from me.
But, yeah, the, the law that was passed ATF, basically, you know, they'll call us and go, you know, so-and-so wants to do this, and we go, they're allowed by state law. Refer to this, and it says P 102 or something like that. Refer to that law. They're allowed. So it's, it's now a commercial version, you know, we'd have to do the conditional use permit for commercial, but in-home, wouldn't have to touch it, so.
The old things are kind of relaxed that way. You can now use any center fire to hunt deer within Kansas.
Yep.
Missouri's been that way for quite a while, but Kansas just got on doors.
But, new and old business. You guys don't have a meeting, at least as far as I know. If I'm not mistaken, I have to check my email, but I think that, let's see, Claire, you replaced Gary, and his, his new, his new cycle would have been January of 2014. So I need you to think within the next month if you'd like to continue doing this.
Oh, gee, gee, I just changed my mind, John.
You get a jail-free card, but no one almost ever does. You get a month, and you get to, you know, decide if you want to do it, but I just...
We won't meet again till April, so she got to decide now.
So it's on record. But I think, if I'm not mistaken, Wally was up, too, for that, so I need to get with Wally and see if he wants to do it again, but, but other than that...
Well, I assume. We just voted him, what, vice chair?
Yeah. But everybody voted him except his vice chair, so. And again, that's only interim until April, so...
Okay. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move adjourn.
Second? All right.
Second.
Everyone in favor, please. Thank you, guys, for joining the planning commission.
Thank you, Dustin.
Thank you.
Nice meeting you.